Welcome, everybody, to Civil Beats panel with our lovely candidates running for city council District 3. So this beautiful windward side of the island. I'm based in town and sometimes I'm like, wow, I wish I could vote for one of these candidates because town's great, but there's really nothing like going over the Pali Highway and seeing those beautiful views of the ocean and the jungle. So yeah, I figured we'll get into policy questions soon enough, but I wanted to just start off with some brief little ice breaking introductions to three candidates. Clearly, you all care about the community enough to run for office. So I just figured we could start by just saying your name, something you enjoy doing in the district, and what made you run for elected office? So we can start with you, David, and then maybe run down.
My name is David Kawahikawa. My profession, I'm a musician and a musical producer. I have a small business called Audio Hawaii, where I sell digital representations of Hawaiian implements so that other people can use it in their computers and in their songs and stuff. And I'm a dog daddy, two dogs, golden retrievers. I was born and raised in Kailua, spent my childhood there. The beach, Wa Manalo, camping and stuff like that. The only rule we had was you had to be home by when the streetlights came on. What I love to do in Kailua is walk, go to the parks. You know, O'Malohia Park is beautiful. And listen to the music and it's nice. What else? I think that's about it.
And what made you run for?
Oh, what made me run for office? I just wasn't seeing things getting done. I was, I drive down this road out here and it's had potholes. And you have to watch, you know, the car in front, everybody does the hula going around the pothole like that. So, I mean, it's happened, it's been happening for a long time. And I just want to do something about it, you know, to get the road fixed however. And just to help this community. It was a lot different when I was a kid. And I know it'll never be that way, but with what we have now, we can do better, I think. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Kelsey Nakandila. By the way, so you have three Hawaiians here, all of us went to Kumea schools. We went here at the same, we went in school at the same time and he was a bit, he was a bit earlier. A bit earlier, like one or two years. And so I'm a retired naval officer. My husband first, father of three, grandfather of six. Again, retired Navy, I was a supply officer, logistics officer. I just retired at the beginning of '24. My last tour was in Naples, Italy. I helped with the Turkey earthquake, where you had to, everything mobilized from a medical hospital to getting them food and supplies. And in the tour before that, I was in Bahrain, which is in the Middle East, and Qatar. Most people pronounce it Qatar, but it's pronounced Qatar. And so I spent time there. When they evacuated off Afghanistan, they came through my base. My responsibility was to take care of them and make sure they're fed. We had to build houses and so I'm really good at building microhouses because we had had to do all of them over there. 7,000 Afghanistan refugees came in, just like you saw on the news. The planes were just like you saw, as there was not hidden. It was very difficult, very time consuming. I had a good team of people. You know, I did the college thing, I got my master's degree undergrad at UH. Again, served 20 years, naval officer. And I'm running because from the time of at Kumea schools, they, they talk about a term called servant leadership. And so to me, really, it's about a continued service. So I did, served my country for 20 years and now I'm trying to serve. I'm, I'm born and raised on this side of the island too. Born and raised in Kanioui, I now live in Kailua, family Wa Manalo. And this district is near, near in Diri. You know, with Hawaiians, we always tend to gravitate towards the island, right? So I'm from here, this is where I'm from, raised my children here. And, you know, I just want to make the community better. They are doing some things good. I don't manage every little thing that they do. So, but in general, some things are good, some things maybe not so good, some places they can improve. And so I think that I can do a good job in caring for the people here. And again, I'm attached to this land, to this area, district tree, like you said, driving over the Pali. Done that many times in my life, coming home from Kumea schools and UH, so.
And what's something that you enjoy doing in the district?
I run on the beach probably as, as much as possible. We got, I got an Australian Blue Heeler, for you dog lovers. I don't think I ever get anything except with Australian Blue Heeler. I run on the beach, I do sprints. I didn't mention this, so I'm a two-time Olympic athlete, so I, running, I like to run.
You gotta like to run if you run on the beach.
It's a lot, it's fun, it's fun.
Yeah, great. Esther?
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Civil Beats for having this forum. And I actually wanted to thank my two fellow candidates for being here. I believe that competitive races are a, is healthy for democracy. And part of the conundrum we're having at the federal level is that one of the major parties did not have a competitive primary. And hence the challenges we're having at the federal level. But, so having said that, I, I do believe that it's, it's good. It's good for not just the Windward side, but for, for, for the residents of Oahu. One of the joys I have, of course, it's clear that we have kind of a Kumea conspiracy going on here. And for the Alpuno Ho graduates in the audience, I'm so sorry because if you were on here, you'd probably file a lawsuit against us for saying that we were trying to make sure Kumea graduate won. But having said that, I, most of my family live on the west side, as many of you know, in mostly in the Wainai, Nanakuli, Kapule and Wa Manalo homesteads. But I am the newbie here with regard to the Windward side. But genealogically, I trace my ancestry to Maui. Three of my four grandparents, Hawaii Island, Oahu, and the island of Molokai. So I have a lot of friends and I live smack in the middle of Kailua town. And I enjoy going out and spending time with them. For those of you who may know my background, I was in DC for 24 years. Left my parents when I was 15 years old for education. And I did a lot of good things in DC, but it was very lonely. So I agree, I greatly appreciate every day that God has given me. And I like to spend it with friends. And so I think the Kailua restaurants, because I live smack in town, make a lot of money out of me. I am running for reelection, as many of you know, I'm your current council member. Represent Wa Manalo, Kailua and Kaniouhe. And overlapping with Ahui, Ahuimenu and Pe'ea. I am running because I want to continue to effectively advocate, not just for the people of the Windward side, but for the people of Oahu. I am the vice chair of the Honolulu City Council. And I know that all three of us here care deeply about the quality of life for residential communities. And I feel that during my three and a half years of being on the city council, I have advanced issues relating to the Windward side, both policy-wise as well as funding. Of course, homelessness and affordable housing is important for all of Oahu. But in our, in our neighborhoods, our homeless families and individuals are going into our parks. And sometimes the quality of life of our city beach parks have been impacted. I fought for a ban for Wa Manalo commercial activities at Wa Manalo Park. And fought against an attempt by the administration to repeal the ban on commercial activities at Kailua district parks as well. Invasive species management is an important issue. I had a spearheaded Windward Town Hall meeting because the three threats for the Windward side is little fire ants, coconut rhinoceros beetle. And we have a pocket of koki frogs on the hilltop in Wa Manalo. And I'm very concerned because all they have to do is jump along the Windward side and then across the Ko'ala'as into Honolulu. Our parking is a big issue, not just in Lani Kai, but all residential communities. Water quality, Kailua wastewater treatment plant. Despite the fact that in the last four years, we have allocated over $100 million, $11 million going to a UV lighting system to deal with exceedance in bacterial levels. It's a problem. In the last week, there's been several exceedance levels. And so that's a problem. And food security is a big issue. I'm proud that the city has allocated $9 million for over 100 acres in Mauna Weli for two nonprofits, Ho'uku Aina and Ko'ulo Kalana, to provide for food security. And we provided $9 million for that. Speeding is a big issue, not just with speed bumps, but the actual speed limits. And the state just gave us the authority to provide, for us to decrease the speed limit. So I will be introducing with council member Dos Santos Tam, a measure to provide for 20 miles per hour as opposed to 25 around school districts. I am going to offer an amendment for 15 miles per hour. And we could not do that if the state didn't delegate that to us. And Senator Chris Lee was the one who sponsored that bill. And I know we're going to go into details, but I just wanted to let you know why I'm running. It's about the quality of life issues. And I feel that I've demonstrated both with funding as well as laws that have been passed. Issues that, that pertain to the Windward side.
Great, thank you so much for all of your answers. Esther, you preempted my next question about priorities, so thank you for that too. So I guess Esther, if you had any other priorities you wanted to mention, since you already mentioned a bunch of them, I figured we could go into that. And like you mentioned also, we have specific questions to go more in depth with some of these things, like affordable housing, like homelessness, like short-term rentals. But Esther, if you feel good with that list, then I feel good with it too, and we can move on to Kelsey.
Yes, let me just add something though, that I think what, one of my strengths are is that I have 30 years of experience at the federal, state and county level. And I feel that I know how to navigate governments and achieve objectives when they identified opportunities come my way. For a lot of the issues that we're talking about, whether it be affordable housing or homelessness or infrastructure, right? For major rare road repairs, it requires a collaboration because the city doesn't have all of the funds. And one thing that I have worked on is building capacity within the city government to compete for federal discretionary grants. They already get a set amount for formula grants. But the bipartisan infrastructure law that has tons of infrastructure money and Inflation Reduction Act, which has a lot of climate change and renewable energy funding, we need to be able to compete for it and we have not been doing a good job. So in the four years, that three and a half years I've been with the city, I've actually allocated funding for the different departments to build the capacity to be able to go for those funds. And so that's the only thing I wanted to add on top of whatever already delineated.
Gotcha. And just also some ground expectations. So this is not a debate, we're not going to be attacking other candidates. We're not going to be doing anything, I know, right? You can put your tomatoes back downstairs and take care of them for some food later. But yeah, so no attacking other candidates is a way to present your views and your priorities. And I'm also not setting time limits for answers. But if at a certain point, we get to a point where you're talking for a while, I might cut you off just so the other candidates have a chance to answer too. Does that sound good to everybody? Any objections?
Nope.
Okay, cool. Kelsey, priorities?
For me, the priority would be figure out how to lower the cost of living, right? And that's going to easily branch into the housing situation here with the price of homes. Again, I own a home in Kailua. It was, I actually got lucky, I'd like to take credit for it, but I bought it in '09, not because I had any kind of futuristic forecasting, I just got lucky. I bought it at the time. But it, but it is, you know, now it's people, it's very difficult to afford a home. About a million dollars, I think, to just get a regular home in Kailua. So cost of living, which is going to branch into housing. Environment, which takes, water, right? Kailepulu and Ka'aua Nui Marsh. Runoffs, then you got the water treatment plant, Windward side water treatment plant. That needs to be addressed, plus invasive species. The rhinoceros beetle and the fire ants, koki frogs. You know, you could look towards some places where they have had success in getting rid of, like Guam actually had success in the early 2000s on how to get rid of the rhinoceros beetle. So we could duplicate some of their plans. And in Queensland, Australia, they got rid of the fire ants. So they come up with a detailed plan on how to do it. And it does surround between prevention and the prevention goes from having, when it's first, if someone has a fire ant, report it, right? So that's community education. And then some insects, they use pesticides in order to kill them. That did work, but a lot of it revolved around community involvement. Figuring out where, where it is first and then coming up with some pesticides. Again, Queensland, Australia got rid of the fire ants and Guam got rid of the rhinoceros beetle. And I think it was '07 was when Guam did it. So the environment also, you got the water, like I said, you could come up with a plan. And I have probably, rather than getting a filtration, filter system, get an organic, more natural one, which is increase the wetlands. So you can basically act as a natural filter down the waterways of Ka'aua Nui and Kailepulu. So we got the cost of living relating to housing. Then you also have the environmental, everything from the water to the rhinoceros bug. And then government overreach or government lack, lack of what they're doing. They're not, they've actually made strides with the DPP to try and lower that. Again, that ties back into housing, but that was a big problem that the city and county can address. How do you get the DPP going faster? I think they're trying to get the AI system so they can increase the timeline because they had a big backlog, right? It was exacerbated by COVID. So those are the areas that I'm working on. Again, the last one would be this government either overreach into our lives or not, they're not doing enough. So those are my three issues that I, that I plan to do. They do overlap because you have the housing issue dealing also with the homeless, homeless shelters. A plan, I have a nonprofit and a contractor ready to go and build houses. And at the same time, they have a barrier to work program. And it's been fairly successful. It's taking place across the nation, using that program for the barrier to work and in building microhomes, right? So I got the, did someone just say something? Did someone else hear that?
Okay, I was like, whoa. Not just you, don't worry.
So that's already in place and ready to go, right? I, I do know the person in charge of the nonprofit that can fund this, that can do that one activity of the barriers to work and also the contractor that can build the houses. And he has the floor plans, I've actually even seen him. So those are my three big issues for now.
Thank you. David?
Yes. Let's see, my big issues right now are traffic in Kailua. I mean, there's ridiculous amount of traffic for, and the way I'd like to get is to, the way I'd like to handle it is to coordinate between the state and the city when they do their projects, you know, on the roads. You know, they, they dig up a sewer over here and then they got to trim trees where the alternate routes are. So I mean, if they have better coordination between the two, where only one activity can handle and then the alternate versions, I mean, the alternate routes were free to handle the rest of the thing, the rest of the traffic. And then also school traffic seems to be a big thing. I mean, we could offer incentives for bus, bus rides, carpooling. You know, when UH starts, it's like ridiculous, you know, the, maybe not here, but over there. So I mean, we could do that. And another thing is the vacancies. I think all of our problems for a lot of things are because we don't have the people to work in the, in the jobs, you know, for, we need more people on parks and recreation. We need more DLNR people, we need more police. We need more people in government. And I think I'd like to try to solve that with, let me see. I mean, people want to have, people go to work if they have childcare. So you know, if we offer childcare and then on the, on the flip side, there's a lot of people taking care of their parents. So we could do elder care too, you know? So that get these people out and back into the workforce. Also, a lot of people retired during COVID. We could entice them back with, you know, incentives and stuff to come back to work. Not in their, you know, in their, when they, their position when they left, but, you know, to help out. Then there's also job sharing, flex time and streamlining the hiring process. So it doesn't take two weeks to hire somebody. And then also to drop the college degree requirement for jobs that don't require a college degree. You know, now to work for the city, you need a college degree. And a lot of jobs don't need a college degree. And then also taking care of the parks, which is part of the staffing problem. I mean, if we have more, more people taking care of the parks and the funds, then like O'Malohia Garden doesn't have porta potties instead of their, their beautiful stone, what do you call, comfort station. You know, and you can see the mountain, you don't have to look at the porta potty. And then also Kailua park is broken windows that have been broken for years. You know, you just need more people to do these jobs. So that my priority would be like fill the vacancies, you know, get people back working and that things.
Great, thank you so much, everybody, for your answers there. I want to start by talking about housing, which as you mentioned, a lot of us know is a really big issue here. I think the median price on Oahu is probably still over a million dollars. I haven't checked in a few months, I don't want to be too sad. Anyway, so there's a few different philosophies on how to lower the cost of housing. So very simply, you know, prices go up when supply is lower than demand. And so just from what I've seen as a journalist, it seems like some people like to focus on the supply side, if we need to build more housing. And some people like to focus on the demand side, if we need to sort of restrict who can buy the housing that we already have in supply, if that makes sense. And so I think that's maybe a way to, we can address this kind of issue here. Whether you see the supply side as being the side to focus more on or the demand side. And obviously, you can get more nuanced than that, but I figured that might be a way that we can start talking about this issue. Does that make some sense? Cool, and anybody can just jump in and go first for this one?
I'm a supply side economics, my, my undergraduate degree was in supply side. I'm follow Thomas Sowell, Milton Freeman. Supply side economics, I think you need to increase the supply. There is a available, the city and state own certain lands, they could make it available. Now, you could also, in theory, you could go up, right? But then I'm not sure you want that, these taller apartment buildings in my district, right? I'm not sure that'll pass, but you could make lands available and increase the supply through that. I know that they are currently working on, the other thing that affects price is the DPP backlog. So you could work on it. And they are doing, you know, they have AI. I saw the mayor talk about that his, that is a big priority for him to improve the DPP process. But until it is improved, you're going to get backlogs, people have still waiting to build a wall. One guy said he was waiting two years to build a wall. And so they're also have the self-certification taking place, then third-party certification, that's actually happening in DPP. That is going, once that starts to get more and more integrated, it is going to speed up. And that will help lower the price. And if you add in some supply and we get some, some lands we can build, that should also do it. And I know that there is something, if I'm not mistaken, and Esther, you can chime in after that. I believe there is something in land use in order to raise the property taxes of outside investors. I think Bill 34, if I'm not mistaken. So you could raise it on outside investors, I think 1.3 was, was where it all began, right? So that's, that will also decrease. If I, think about it, if I had an extra million dollars, I would buy a house here. It's a great investment, at 1.65 is your property taxes. Let's push that up to 30%. A million dollar house here in Hawaii costs the same property taxes, actually has less property taxes than a $300,000 house in Indiana. So if you're going to invest money, you get a house in Hawaii, right? And you get a good return on investment because your property taxes are, are very low. So we need to pass that bill so you can raise it. So the three problems would be increase the supply, speed up the DPP process because the developers tell me that the DPP process slows everything down, right? And then that, and then for the actual homeowner, it took me four months. I just remodeled about three or four years ago, it took me four months to get a, a simple remodel. We just did an extension with another bathroom and added, then rearranged. So four months to get that, it should have taken two to three weeks. So hopefully, the self-certification will speed up that process. But all of those things need to take place. Right now, it's good rhetoric and yeah, you did this, you did that. But we need to see some results, so it starts affecting you and your families. That's where, that's where we're really going to see it happen. I, I do think that it will, if you put in all of these components, you will start to see the prices tamp down a little bit. You're not going to go from a million dollars to 700,000, right? But you're going to go down and it becomes affordable for a normal working family with decent jobs, right? And then you got to help, grandpa got to help out, right? That, that's what I do now, I find ways to help my children that way. So that's good.
Something that I actually wrote down as you guys were talking, this idea that it's not just high housing costs, it's also that maybe people don't have the jobs that can pay for these high housing costs. And Esther, you sort of touched on this right at the end of your answer. But I wrote this down just now, so apologies if it's not the most eloquently worded question. But something that does come up here is a lack of well-paying jobs so people can afford why is high cost of living. And so how would you use your power as a city council member to tackle this issue? Again, anybody can jump in at any point.
Go ahead. Well, I mean, that's the whole thing of supplying, my whole point of filling the vacancies. We need to make it attractive for people. You know, to get people better paying jobs, education, training, we can do that. As part of the city council, I, I don't know. I mean, we could have things. I think just training and hire, I don't know. You?
I think if we're talking about jobs on this side of the island, on jobs statewide, so you're, you're, there's two different avenues to go here, right? The first thing you would have to do is develop another good, strong industry. I mean, this state is and always will revolve around tourism, right? So, but then you need just some film things going on, there's some agricultural things going on. So you would have to develop a new industry, right? Or promote one of the other ones, for instance, coffee, right? Where you need a certain type of weather to get the coffee. Lion Coffee has the place down, I think, off of Wa Kamilo, right? You could invest in, you could spend money in that direction, pushing it towards a new industry, right? I know that the Cool Oil Ranch, right? The Jurassic Park was filmed out there, you could push the film industry. I think it's probably one of the better ones because we're so picturesque landscapes, right? So developing the film industry, I think, would probably be the best way. And then you could train, push that the way that they, actually, if you go back about 10, 15 years, they were pushing, when I was getting my master's degree, at some point, they were giving away master's degree if you went and worked for CPS afterwards. They would pay for your master's degree and give you a job right when you graduated. So you could do that same model with the film industry. If you get, you, you do this in the film industry, you'll get this relatively high-paying job and we have a job for you. But in order to do that, we need to expand parts of the film, like, that's what we're saying, to have incentives to build up, we're going to have incentives to bring people. I know there's already incentives here, but let's work on that, right? We need, it, the fact that The Rock is a big movie star helps us because he has a heart for, for this island, right? And Jason Momoa. So get some of these bigger stars, and probably the biggest star is Bruno Mars. So you got to get these guys to come over. Or use the people that they have to bring their films over. And then we need to get our education system aligned with those, those film industries, just like they did with education, like I said. When I was getting my master's degree, they, they were trying to talk me into, you get this and you got a job right after. That, use that same program in the film industry or the agriculture industry. I'm not sure you're going to have quite as many high-paying jobs in the agriculture industry, right? Because coffee, nothing against coffee, I drink coffee. But you're not going to have the high-paying jobs if the film industry would. And that'll probably branch into some technology things, which again, you could make that avenue at the, at the school, and you could start at the community college. My son is a certified arborist and he got his arborist degree through a class at the, at Windward Community College. I told you, I've been on this side my whole life. So he got, he is a certified arborist, same, same name. Put Kelsey Nakandila Junior in there and you'll see that he's a certified arborist and he went to the class that was offered at Windward Community College. So that type of thing, we need to start pushing out at a higher, to get these higher paying jobs. You could start it there, you go to UH, move on up. And I would say, develop a new industry or jump on the film industry and maybe slash that into sort of the tech industry.
Thank you for the question. You know, for me, it's not just about high-paying jobs, it's also for sustainable jobs, even if they're lower paying, but they pay the bills, and so that people can continue to thrive here. So on the high-paying jobs, quite frankly, with the big presence of the federal government, I'm shocked that the University of Hawaii and the private sector have not found ways to build capacity for us to compete for those jobs. A lot of these jobs are six-figure jobs, so that's one gap. And that goes to not just federal jobs, but all high-paying jobs. I think there's a role for the Chamber of Commerce, the unions, and the University of Hawaii, and all the community college systems, including Winwood Community College, to identify the, those jobs and have classes or certifications so that they can get educated. I know after the Maui fires, the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement for the trades that weren't currently available, they created trade workshops so you have immediate supply of workers on the job. And so I believe that it's not just that. The film industry, council member Agitoba has been taking the lead on that. And so we're hoping that gets enacted into law before the ending of the year. I think that the role of small businesses, including here in Kailua, are important. That's why, for me, it's not just about a high paying, it's about sustainable jobs. And I think the city's Office of Economic Revitalization is doing a good job. They created a small business incubator project where they work with all of the small businesses and kind of plug the gap where they don't have the time to go look for all of the resources, right? At the city, state, and federal levels, as well as other fundings available for them to have a thriving small business. And I already mentioned agriculture, so, but agriculture, I kickstarted the first ever agricultural grants program. $3 million went to 66 farmers. 500,000 of those funds went to farmers in the Winward side. I don't believe it could ever be like the good old days, because we don't want it like the plantation-style days. But in order for us to promote food security and help our farmers, I think that we need to support our agricultural industry.
Great. Something that a lot of people do, I think, on the Winward side especially, but, you know, as we know, tourists nowadays don't just stay in Waikiki. People like to come to the Winward side and everything, and short-term rentals proliferate a lot. And a lot of people use them as a way to make some extra income. But a lot of people would also say, we don't like how proliferated these short-term rentals are. So the state recently, for those who don't know, this past year gave the county's power to phase out short-term rentals. So Maui's mayor, actually, when this law passed back in May or so, immediately said that they want to phase out like 7,000 short-term rentals there. And so as a council member, you guys would have the power to do the same thing here in Honolulu. What are our thoughts on that? Is that something that we would like to do, phasing out short-term rentals? Is there some nuance in there? Yeah.
I'm for short-term rentals, but it needs to be enforced in such a way. Because if you're, again, paying for the house, and you don't have the high-paying job, you got to rent, maybe rent something out, right? Or the Ohana zoning, depending if you get the Ohana zoning, I think down Oneava, you can get some. But, and also in dimension, again, prior military, so a lot of these guys, so right now, RIMPAC is going on. I know at least 10 guys that I see every day that are here for RIMPAC. There's no room in the hotel on base. They all come from town. So you could, that's an avenue where you could make money. So yes, we, no one wants foreign people to come in, buy a house, and then rent it out. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, my wife and I have a room, and we want to rent that out. And, but only short-term, not this, you know, 30 days. Right? Not where you can see, you can walk, walk down Kailua during the day, and you'll see guys with luggage things. And that's what, you know what they're doing, someone's renting that out. So again, I don't necessarily see anything wrong with that for the person, for the resident, someone that's here to try and make extra money, right? In order to make life more affordable, I get that. So outside investors know, the problem is going to become unenforcement. The fact that the mayor just cut it out like that, I would, I would like to talk to a few people that were residences. They were, they don't want to break the law, because you're basically encouraging people to break the law because they're like, they need the money. What's the answer? The answer is, I'll just do it anyway, and if I get caught, I'll deal with the consequences after I get caught. And we don't want to promote that. We want to promote following the rules as best we can, have some ethics, and do the right thing. So I, I'm for it, but it needs to be enforced correctly. No outside people, only residences. And I think we've, Ben and you and I talked about this, right? So if you own two, like, two homes, like, so if my wife and I owned a house in Kool-Aid Track, right, we could rent it out, although I'd probably live there and go rent out my other house on Kipu Kans, but anyway. So, you know, you could rent it out and make some money. That's, that would be what I would say, but again, the enforcement is the problem. You don't want them, like, if someone owns two houses or three houses, I'm not sure I'm for that, right? So the specifics on dealing with it have to be worked out with the other council members, and there needs to be debate and discussion going on. But in general, I'm for it because it gives people the opportunity to make money. They got to pay taxes on it, right? They're going to have to, so we'll get some revenue in there too. Then the enforcement is going to be the problem. And I'd like to sort of look up and see, how can you enforce that? To me, but that's on the city and county people, whoever is collecting. You need to figure it out, make sure you do it right.
Yeah, I totally agree with Kelsey. That's why I wanted him to go first, because I read it in his answers. That you have, that, I mean, people need to make their mortgages. I mean, it's the price of houses. And then, so, I mean, I like his idea of having, you can have two houses and rent one out, you know, with less property tax, not paying the full hotel property tax or whatever it is for the, it turns, for the other house. And then, you know, have, live in your, live in your house. We're not, you know, I'm totally against BRV, illegal BRVs and air, these, VR, verbals and Airbnb's. I mean, that's getting ridiculous, but, I mean, for, just to help people out, they need to pay their mortgage. And they can do it by renting their house, some rooms in their house. And they're not going to get rich out of it, they just want to survive. So, I mean, I would be all for, at least, you know, only not four or five houses, you know, or the old houses. But, you know, like, two houses would be great, and then you don't have to pay the exorbitant property tax for the second house. So, I mean, that's, yeah, I liked his idea.
For me, the, one of the priorities in the short-term rental discussion is, I think we all can agree, is that there is no room for illegal short-term rentals. Everybody agrees on that, and that continues to be a problem. And so adequate funding for DPP, which the city council has provided for, to go after those illegal short-term rentals. I think we could actually get a better bearing of the universe of legitimate short-term rentals out there. So having said that, I am for responsible regulation of short-term rentals. As many of you know, the city council passed a bill that would require 90 days or less, as opposed to 30 days or less. And a federal court threw that out and said that we can enforce all of the other provisions of that law, except for the 90 days, because we didn't have that authority. And as Ben mentioned at the outset, we currently have that authority. Am I for throwing all short-term rentals out? No, because they serve a role in our market, but I do believe in proper regulation. So provisions that I inserted into the recent city ordinance called for registration of all of the bed and breakfasts and transit vacation units. It addressed the parking issues that required them to be off-site. And it required better tracking of their platforming systems when they tried to rent it out for X amount of time. And of course, the reason we want the registration is so that they could pay their taxes. With regard to how we're going to implement the recent state law, we are going to work with the mayor and my rest of my colleagues to find out that fine balance of what we do with the 30 versus 60. So right now, you're still able to do 30 days or less. And the question is, what do we do for those who are 30 to 90 days less? Do we grandfather them? So that is what we are considering. And we are going to be seeking the community's input. For those of you who actively go to the neighborhood boards, that's something we're going to be discussing. I did push a resolution to give us the authority to phase out. And again, the state has provided for that, but for me, that's a tool. And so that if we do see a adverse impact on residential communities we have that available, but I have no intent to do it at this time, because I think the focus should be on illegal short-term rentals.
One big power that the city council members have is being able to shift around priorities in the budget. And so I'm wondering from you guys, what kinds of shifts would you like to make? So what do you think deserves more investment, and how would you approach finding the money for that?
Well, I think with the areas that I mentioned, right? So, and I know there's already work going place on the wastewater treatment plant, right? They're going to bring in that ultraviolet thing, so, and so I would, my initial would be the water runoffs. So that would be my first, is Kaila Pulu and Kaweenu Marsh, right? Figure out the best plan for that per scientific. I mean, people have, you can build infiltration, filtration systems, which, according to Los Angeles, that didn't work very well. The maintenance cost is exceeding, not to mention installation cost is high. So I think, I'm making up a number to have a conversation. If you, if you're going to spend $10 million on installing that, you might put $10 million to increase the wetlands, which acts as a natural filter, an organic way of getting rid of the water runoff as it goes down, rather than the filtration system. So that would be one area that I would put more funds into. Studying that and making a decision, increasing the wetlands, so we can build up a filtration system to make the water better. Then this is the water that goes into the ocean, which is, as I said, I go almost every day. So that's what I would, where I would put some money in there. I think the mayor is already doing enough at the DPP level, because I think that that's where you can make a big dent in the residences, right? If you want to build a wall, or build an extra bathroom, or build an extra room, so you can rent it out for 30 days. So, I mean, so these type of things, I think, is where the money needs to go. Something to do with housing, I mean, you could look at the homelessness problem. Like I said, I have the nonprofit that has the Barrier to Work Program and the construction president. So you give me X amount of dollars, we can put together something to get some land. And you don't need a lot, because it's not, you're not going to build 4,000 micro homes, right? You're going to get whatever, somewhere between 20 and 50 micro homes on X amount of land. Get the land, either we can purchase the land, it just depends, or we can get the land gifted and then build. And we have the, the goal is to get these people working, put them in this micro house, use the other plan that I have to get them some skills so they can get a job and then move out. That's, that's the plan. So that's where I put the money. The two places would be the homelessness, sort of micro house area, and then fixing the water with the wetlands. And I think, again, any follow-up necessary for the DPP to keep that moving forward. And that needs to be consistently reviewed. So we get, give me a brief on what's happening there. Like, where are you right now? Is the AI system working? Is the self-certification working? Is everything working exactly as planned? Can I see the permits that you passed? There should be a pretty high number. So that's, that's what I would do with changing the budget.
And I might have missed this, but how would you approach, I guess, finding the money for that? And I know, it might come down to-
I thought he was in the budget, though. It's not in the budget? I was under the impression that it is already in the budget. The 3-point-something-billion-dollar budget that the mayor, that they already approved. That's what I was talking, I was talking, you didn't say find the money, that's a whole nother conversation. You said go find, am I wrong, folks? I thought he had to, you said, where do I want to shift money? Shift meaning you have it one place, and so I'm saying, I want to shift it to what I just talked about.
Sure. So I guess a clarifying question, and maybe this is, the answer is just, you'll find out in the moment during the nitty-gritty of the budgetary process. But if you see maybe an area where you think there's too, not too much money, but an area where you think you can shift the money from also, because that is a very big reality when it comes to finding the money.
I don't have the budget memorized, I didn't pass the budget, so I'm not sure where that is, right? And that's a tough, even if you gave me the budget, it's a 3-point-something-billion-dollar budget. So that's, that's, it was, it's going to be a lot of programs in that, that, I don't have notes, I don't have it off the top of my head. My bad. I don't have notes, and I don't have a computer. I'm just doing everything off the top of my head.
So where are we going to, I mean, it's like robbing, you know, robbing one to pay for the other. I don't know, but I, where are we getting money from? What are we increasing? I mean, I don't understand your question. I guess neither of us do.
Sure, yeah. So the budget, like Kelsey mentioned, is huge.
Yeah.
There are lots of priorities in there. And so the question that I have is, how would you, if at all, want to shift around those priorities? So if you, if you put more money into one thing, it does mean shifting money from something else. Or it means, for example, raising property taxes to get more money for the city. And so, does that make some sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of out of our scope right now, though. Like, I'd like to see more money in things that affect people, like the parks and stuff like that. But I don't know where I take it from. I don't, you know, the budget. You know, I'd like to fix the parks, the things that people use, the roads, that kind of thing. I'd like more money to go into that. And taken from, I don't, that, I don't know. Maybe she knows.
Well, first of all, let me just say, David has it right with regard to where we wish there could be more funding. You know, the Department of Environmental Services and Department of the Design and Construction actually get a lot of money. And the Department of Environmental Services has it because they're mandated by federal law, with their normal EPA directives. So they don't need the money. But, and while there is money, I need to tell you, so it's not just about money, because I feel that even with the $100 million we set aside for hazard pay, which is not even going to be enough for city workers, it's likely going to be up to 150 to 175 million. It's going to spill over to next year's budget. Having said that, I actually feel that the universe is okay, given that, because there's tons of money for affordable housing, just in this budget, 80 million, 44 for homelessness initiatives. My beef is, again, the lack of capacity within the relevant agencies and the vacancies that David talked about as well, because, and it gets to the capacity. So, because if we don't have them, what's, why are we spending all this money when you can't even use it? I was told, after I was told, no, thank you for the 50 million, that they had returned, an agency had returned $90 million. That's just unacceptable. HPD, for example, it's not a matter of money, they have 400 vacancies. And if we fill those vacancies, not only will we be able to help with public safety, we could also help in deterring crime, because we'd have police, more police around. I know for me, I wanted to increase the number of our policing team. We are, we are below pre-COVID pandemics, and I was unable to do so because they said that the priority was to address the 400. Ideally, just in a magical world, Parks and Rec doubled their, doubled their amount of money, right? Because we need it, right? As part of the transient accommodation tax, I fought for a sliver to go to the impact of tourism. And then, of course, consequently fought that, I'm sorry, was it not clear I meant the Parks and Recreation? So now Parks and Recreation is eligible for $8 million moving forward. That's one way of finding alternative revenues. I think we all discussed housing, right? How we can increase revenues by getting all of the short-term rentals registered? How we can look at a vacancy tax? How we could go after those who are abusing the current exemption system and get our fair share of taxes? And lastly, of course, I would like to fight for sustainable funding for my agricultural grants program, because I don't believe that it's just state and federal responsibilities. And during the COVID pandemic, I don't believe that our farmers were given adequate support. And so I had to- And so I had to recently, while I helped to secure three million, I had eight million dollars allocated in this year's budget for food systems and that was reprogrammed for hazard pay. So if you're telling me what do I wish for? That's what I would be wishing for, those types of agencies that actually impact us directly, including Department of Transportation Services and the Department of Facility Maintenance with regard to our sidewalks and roads. And that's a different issue because I believe that with infrastructure, there is tons of money at the federal government. That's what they're there for to provide for state and counties. And we need to do a better job at fighting for those funds, not just the funds that are given to us, but funds that are available and then we're leaving them on the table.
So it's been about an hour, and so I just have a few questions left. I don't want to run too, too, too long and have you guys just sit here sort of stagnantly. And so after we get through the questions, we're going to have just sort of meet and greet kind of vibe. So you guys can talk to the candidates, too. So feel free to bring up questions, too. But we're just going to ask a few more. And but yeah, everybody cool with that? Any objections? Anybody really like to go to the bathroom?
Are you going to are you going to ask questions off of the index?
Yeah, I'll ask some questions off the index, but also I I have a bunch of index cards, so I might not get to all of them, just FYI. But something I want to talk about that's a big problem throughout all of Oahu. I think a little bit less on the Windward side than in town where I live, but is homelessness. So for context, recently, without getting into the legalese of it all, the Supreme Court just came out with a decision a few weeks ago that lets local governments have a lot more legal leeway when it comes to things like bans on outdoor camping. Honolulu has a sit-lie ban, and so in specific business districts, you're not allowed to sit or lie between certain hours. And so this Supreme Court ruling allows for those hours to, for example, be expanded and not run into as many legal issues. And so as a city council member, this is something that you guys would have the power to either expand these hours a little bit more or add new laws against outdoor camping. How do you guys see your approach to homelessness? Is this a power that you'd like to exercise?
The homeless situation, I was really taken by I was researching the the where they the homeless, it's like a comm a community thing. And there's like communal kitchen, communal bathrooms, communal showers where they save, you know, so they have a it's like a communal area and the rents for the properties are like two fifty. And then everybody has communal things in there. And I think that's a way that we can go. It's in the governor's thing, it's called the Kalahale, his Kalahale Point. And we can have more of those. I mean, to me, there's three people, three kind of people that are homeless. There are the homeless people that want to get better, you know, they want to enrich their lives, they want to work, they want homes. Then there's the the second one is the mentally ill people, but they need help. So we need to expand like four, get them into hospitals and get them looked at. And then there's the outlaws, the derelicts, who don't want help, they don't think they need help. Those are the ones that are sleeping in the bus stops and I mean, where people should you should be able to sit at a bus stop and wait for a bus and not have to kick some homeless guy out. So I think that's where this would come in into play, that they could remove. I don't know what to do with it, but you know, they can remove it and give the the things back to the public, the bus stops and the stuff. But I don't know about my cousin lives across the street from Waianaealo and there's this homeless, they they get around it and then there's this homeless encampment. And we need to do something about that. Now, this would fall into that, right? Yeah. So I mean, there's chop shop there and there's all kinds of stuff. So they need the sweeps, I think, are helping, but they they stop the sweeps, so. I think this, I don't know. Anyway, so I think that this law will help in the homeless situation.
At the end of the day, for me, it's all about the supply of housing. And when I say housing, it's not just for all, but including all income classes, including our homeless community. At the end of the day, if we don't have enough shelters or transitional housing or long-term housing for our homeless communities, where do we expect them to go? So even despite the court ruling, why try to tell the city to go and crack the whip when they have nowhere to go? So I'm for working with all partners, including nonprofit organizations, to provide the type of housing that we're talking about. Auntie Blanche McMillan, who runs Hui Mahaiaina in Waianaealo, of course, is at the forefront. She has about fifty people, but she is working on some flood mitigation to increase the number of units. And so that project in tandem with other projects on Oahu that the governor is promoting in Kanihohe, we also have a nonprofit, Auntie Twinko, on the Waianaealo Coast, who's doing wonderful things. We need to multiply those types of efforts by ten times. And that's why I told you it's not about the money because the money is there. It's about us having the appropriate partners to be able to work with us to increase the numbers. And so, of course, I think all that we've talked about previously with regard to affordable housing addresses that issue. One area of housing I didn't mention has to do with Hawaiian homelands because, as many of you know, it was a mismanaged program from its outset in nineteen twenty-one by the federal government until nineteen fifty-nine, when they said to the state, as a condition of statehood, you will take over this program. And only recently they've received funds. And as many of you know, I have proposed that ten acres of city residentially zoned land in Kalahale be used for that. So I feel that us helping Hawaiian homeland beneficiaries decreases the overall demand of housing for on Oahu.
When it comes to homeless, I think that when the homeless people are, so right now, there's about five people living in Ikahe. I'm sure if you guys drive past there, you see them, right? Right, right, but not by the bus stop, a little bit behind it because they don't want to get in people's way, right? And then I don't know how many of you are familiar with Mango Man used to walk around here all the time back in the day. Okay, so the homeless people have always been here. However, one thing that we need to at least look at and applaud people that have done this, right? It has gone down. And I think Ben mentioned it, it used to be seven thousand people in two thousand and sixteen. Now I believe it's down to two thousand people, and that is statewide. So it it still doesn't fix the problem of we don't want homeless people laying in Ikahe. If y'all want to walk to Starbucks, I got to walk past these homeless people in order to to get a cup of coffee, right? That's but we need to do be somewhat encouraged that they had the the city, state, federal has made some adjustments in lowering the number of actual, this is according to numbers, I don't make up the numbers, I'm just reading, I'm just spitting out what I remember, right? And I think Ben ended up checking it, if I remember his article that he did. So let's let's start there. That's an encouraging fact that we have less. And then, as Esther was saying, if it's not about the money, we can find land and then put together the programs like the one that I developed with a nonprofit to teach that person how to work, barriers to work, and then a construction company to build these micro houses. People also need to realize that in terms of some of the people that maybe already can work, there are you can go to the, I think it's the IHS website, and it tells you how many openings are at Poohalo Village, Ko'ala Village, right? And you can see, and there's a rent, right? Some, I think it goes from four thirty-one to a thousand dollars. You can see where the openings are now. Some of these people that are working, not not a lot of them, but some of them, they have jobs, like the people out in Waianaealo. I I know that the I've I've seen the things on YouTube, right? Twinko has people that work, but they still stay in their community. Also with Twinko and Auntie Blanche, right? They have rules. So a lot of times, these these homeless people can't follow the rules, so that's why they can't stay there, right? And then they get kicked out and then they go, I'm going to go sleep in Ikahe, right? So again, what Esther was talking about, we need to get them problems and like help. He was saying the three type of people, substance abuse people can't find a, yeah. So you have all these problems, right? We need to we need to find the answers to these problems, help them where necessary. But in the again, if they can follow a certain set of rules, and again, Auntie Blanche and Twinko out of Waianaealo, they they have a good idea of already what type of rules these people will break. They know already, they've been doing it for decades. I think Twinko's been doing it, got to be on over ten, almost fifteen years now. And Blanche's company, I think they're actually up to seventy-three, last I heard. So you have a lot of people that are very familiar with how to deal with these people. They're going to within instance, we've all been around people we know or or industry that we're familiar with. They know who's in trouble and who's not in trouble, who's going to be able to follow the rules and not, right? And so you you bring a counselor alongside if this person has an alcohol or meth problem, right? You bring that counsel alongside and you try and help them so they can stay in in these communities so they cannot be homeless anymore, so they don't go and sleep in Ikahe or walk around Kalamah Beach, right? They don't they don't come into our communities and create fear. So, you know, work stemming from that, I would think, work with the places that are already doing well. But also remember that Ko'ala Village, Poohalo Village have places. They are cheaper than most, right? They're not these fantastic luxury places, they're four hundred and thirty-one dollars if I remember correctly. And you can go and get a place and there's lists, there's a waiting list on how to go. I think there's one even on Kihaapi, you can go and and sign up to go to that one. And so you can get these people there. And again, not putting, but if it's not about money, then give them the four hundred and thirty-one dollars and let them go live there, right? But then they got to follow the rules and then that's the whole process of let's get them better first, right? So they can become stable people in in society. So that would be my answer.
Ben, can I just add something on top of?
Esther go first and then-
Just on top of the housing, because I forgot to talk about services. So to the mayor's credit, they started a crisis outreach response engagement team core. And it's targeting both those with mental and other medical issues. And so there's no once it's a one size fits all approach. It's not just going to be trying to get them halleys over their heads. It's also going to be the services. But why that's different is it's hard to get them to the building. It's better for the city to go out and to Koko. And they have actually been out to Kailua and to other areas on the Windward side. So that's all I wanted to add.
I think more back to your question, the all the people that want, you know, housing and that will be housed are are fine, they'll go. But I'm talking about the outlawers. There are some homeless that they just don't want to do anything. They want to sit there, do their drugs, and there's no amount of anything that will get them into a and you can't force them to go. You can do a seventy-two-hour, I think, hold, but then they're back out on the street again. So I think this sit-lie law would get those people out, you know, and they're I don't know if they're help, you know, you can help them or not. It might, you know, you go through substance abuse, but if they don't want it, you can't do anything about it. So I think that's this law would help that, get the chronics out of the where they put them.
And I just want to make a small fact check. Kelsey, you had mentioned the population of homeless people this year being two thousand, but it is about forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a small fact check there.
Yeah, thank you.
Esther had mentioned Kalahale Hillside and the the land transfer. And I'm glad you mentioned it because we actually had a lot of audience questions around that. So I wanted to, yeah. So I wanted to ask a question about that. I think we can talk specifically about this transfer. So for context, this is where the city council proposed selling land at Kalahale Hillside to Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And so this would allow, I think it was twenty single-family lots to be developed on that site. And city is proposing selling it for five hundred thousand dollars and the property is worth about estimated ten million or so. There are some concerns about the land, like viability. And so I guess the question that I'll ask is, we could talk specifically about this property and we could also talk. I'm curious to know you guys' opinions on how the city approaches land transfers in general. I think Esther-
Would you like to start with me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. So first of all, to provide context, this is ten acres of residentially zoned property. The city has been sitting on it for sixty years. And if they weren't going to use it for housing, which I believe there were previous efforts, then they should do something with it, whether it be transferred to Parks and Recreation to create a dog port or whatever. And I feel that my job for for whatever issue, especially housing, since it's top of mind for all of us, is to look at city resources to see how we could achieve that objective. And looking at the parcel, I knew that multifamily units would not fly because that's a a neighborhood of single-family homes and that is what I was trying to achieve. So there is going to be three processes that will be having to we'd have to undertake. We are not conveying it, we are authorizing the city to convey it because the city has the authority to do that. So first, I introduced a resolution. It will be heard on Thursday of next week, July twenty-fifth at nine AM. And normally, such a resolution requires only one committee and it goes to full council. If we are successful, because of the concerns that have been raised in the community, I am going to hold it in the committee to have another hearing in August. Two amendments that I am proposing at the moment because the land exchange seems to be complicating the issue. And so I'm going to be severing it from the bill. I also would like the city to retain the roads, the maintenance of the roads, and so I'm going to be amending that. And so after the resolution moves forward, if successful, then RM Tal has been hired as the contractor to undertake the due diligence with regard to the suitability of the soil and the land for housing. And then, again, lastly, even after all of that is done, the city still needs to negotiate with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands on the parameters of that transfer and can put whatever conditions they would want if they felt that the city council didn't do a good job. And so I just wanted to lay out the process that will be necessary for it moving forward. And for those who are not aware, I am a Hawaiian homeland beneficiary. I'm quite familiar with the program. Almost all my family members live on Hawaiian homelands on the island of Molokai. Anna Oahu, my great-great-grandmother, was one of the first beneficiaries. And I moved to Kailua because my grandma's homestead in Nana Kuli, I'm the youngest of seven children. And my sister was coming back from Texas with her grandchildren. And as the youngest, it is my job to move. So my older sister is there. I'm jealous because we have plenty mango trees and now I know we're mangoes. But having said that, I understand the whole history of the act. I do understand the concerns of the community. But I just believe that due diligence must move forward to explore why the city never did anything with the property.
You guys have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelsey?
The mic does is RM Tal going to do the assessment and sustainability of the property? Again, it seems that they're going to do it first before the city exchanges it because your question was talking about the exchange of land. And so to me, to address that question directly, RM Tal needs to do a sustainability test on the ten acres on whether that land is good enough to to have. In other words, once the city gives it away to DHHL, it's now in the hands of DHHL and the residents don't have the city to fall back on. That DHHL can say, oh, I'm sorry, we're not going to do what you want because we don't work for you. We're DHHL, right? So I think that that needs to be upfront, that needs to be much more. And according to what you said, that's the way it's going to work.
That's correct.
They'll they'll say, I'm just making this up. The land is great, you can build twenty houses on it, no problem. The Kokahe clay that's in there is not going to fall apart. Meanwhile, every house down the way is tilting. But, okay, so if they come back, they're an established engineering company and they say it's good to go, then then that would be, you know, I'm not going to go and fight them in court and say, well, no, you're wrong. So if they come through as an engineering firm and say that the land is sustainable and it's it's it will work to build houses and it won't cost, again, I'm making up a number, forty million dollars to dredge that all out and then put concrete down there and then put in the sewage system. And and by the way, even if you did get, but there's what's did anyone, is anyone going to ask? Is RM Tal going to ask the wastewater plant? If you start doing that, and that's not even mentioned, parking in roads again, right? We go back to the same thing. If you add twenty houses on the top of Ilimano, or starting at Kalahale, you go all the way down Iliina and then to Ilimano, right? But is that going to affect the traffic in that area, right? Does not parking be is going to become a problem? So that's that's another issue is that in- So that's, that's another issue, is that included in the, in the assessment by RM Taul? I would imagine not, because they seem to be an engineering firm, not an urban planning firm. But these type of things need to be addressed before there's any transfer that takes place, because if you do that after, then it, if all the responsibility falls on the homeowner, AKA the people that live on those streets, my constituents, people that I want to work for. So I'm looking out for you as we move forward. I want an urban planner, an engineer, and everyone to say, this is a good deal, yes, you can do it, right? And again, at an affordable price, not, yeah, spend $100 million, just like the rail, and it'll work fine, right? I mean, we need to come up with realistic plans on doing realistic things, and then, again, that's not even taking into account the infrastructure that you've talked about, roads and parking, roads and parking. So you're just gonna have, what, you're gonna just cut a road through Ilimano Street and head it down to Safeway in Aikahi? What are you going to do to help the people in that area? So that's, that's, that's my two cents in it, right there. And I, again, I want to say that all of that needs to take place before the exchange, because that was your original question, right? What's, what is, what do I think of the process of the exchange? All of these things need to be in writing, viewable by the public before the exchange. Because just, just the history of that area, Kanihoi Ranch sold, sold a lot of those properties for dirt cheap, because they saw the soil, they saw the soil reports. They saw the soil reports, or said, you can, you can have it. And so the people took it. But they didn't, you can go and look up the 1952 soil study, there's a 1985 soil study, and the 2,000-something soil study of Kokahie clay in that, in the Kalahale Hillside, and there were, none of them were good. I think I stole some of your tongue, I'm sorry, bro.
Oh, not at all. For, for those of you who don't know, the Kokahie clay is, is built, is the, Kalahale Hillside is Kokahie clay, which, when it, it, when it gets wet, it's fine. When it dries, the cracks could be as far as a month. And the people that live there, and people who I've known that lived on the street, their walls are cracking, the ground is shifting, and they need to, she said that they're gonna survey the area and make sure that that's not happening up there. But, I mean, the resident's main concern is that it's not gonna be good, but we'll have to wait and see what the company says.
Well, there's a couple of questions left, and then we'll have the sort of meet and greet kind of session. So if there's anything that I don't ask, that you guys want to make sure you ask the candidates, they'll be milling around, and so you can corner them or something, and then, yeah. Just open this up one more time. So, something that I think should be talked about a lot is road safety on the island. So every year, generally for the past five years or so, about 50 or 60 people die on Honolulu's roads. That's about double the number of people in this room right now, every year. So I'm curious to know, as council members, how you guys would attack this issue? One of the questions that came up was about people on motorcycles racing down H3. And I think Esther, you had mentioned earlier, lowering speed limits in some ways. And so how would you guys tackle this issue of road safety?
I think, just everybody has to slow down, jeez. I mean, you know, I, I don't know if lowering the speed limit will help, because nobody follows the speed limit anything. People just need to slow down. And on the freeway yesterday, people were just cutting in, they had no space. I mean, you need to, what do you call, drive safely, and slow down, and make sure, you're gonna get there like two seconds faster if you speed. It doesn't, you just need to slow down, be safe when you speed, and then pedestrians, you have to watch out, but also pedestrians have to watch out, too. When they cross the road, you need to make sure that the driver is looking at you, and he sees you. It's a, it's a crosswalk, and you have the right of way, but you need to be safe, you need to make sure that the driver sees you and he's slowing down before you go in. And it just, the accidents that are happening nowadays are horrible. I don't know if it's alcohol, drugs, youth.
Cell phones.
Cell phones.
Absolutely.
They're, they're just, you need to drive smarter, people need to slow down. I mean, I drive like an old man, you know? A lot of space in front, I don't, and these kids around Kailua are doing weebees, they're gonna get hurt. But yeah, just slow down and drive safely.
Well, I think when it comes to road safety, it, it hits, like you're saying, people are speeding, people are speeding either because they're in a rush, or because they're stressed, or a little bit of both. Goes back to some of the core problems that we talked about. If you have this, you're, you're trying to do, do your second job, so you can make rent, right? You have a cost of living pressure coming down on you, and then that makes you drive recklessly. So, I think you could start there by saying, hey, if we improve people's quality of life, then hopefully, through some education, you can get people to respond better, right? This, I think I was, I told Ben, because we asked about the speed bumps on Mokapu.
Humps.
Yeah. But, okay, they're a necessary evil. I don't like them, right? And then you, you, it's on you if you go over them fast, because then it's gonna ruin your car, that's on you. You know what you're doing when you take that bump at 35 versus 15, right? So that responsibility goes to the other person, goes to the individual. So I think we need to start with trying to do a better job in bettering the quality of life, so these people are not stressed-out speeding drivers, because they want to, they gotta go to their job in town, right? Or they're flying from Kanihoi to go work at the targeting, Kailua, although there's a targeting Kanihoi. But, I'm just saying, if you go to these different jobs, and you, you, your life is stressful, and so what happens is you're trying to, to make your life better, and you have to, again, some people can't take the time to slow down, because they're waking up panicked every day, and they got kids they gotta raise, right? I gotta get my kid to daycare, I gotta pick him, if I don't pick him up from Trinity at 6 o'clock, I'm gonna get $10 a minute, or whatever the charge is, right? And so they speed, right? So, but you do that by making their quality of life better, and then hopefully, and then educate them on speeding, do some things like the speed humps, which I can't stand, but gotta have them. You gotta have them, because people, we do drive too fast. And so you need to have them, and just go slow, and figure it out. That's, I told my son that all the time, you just need to figure it out. So you need to figure out how to be a respectful person, lower, lower everything, get a better quality of life, which we are responsible for, as you're, if we're gonna be your leaders, and then, well, leaders of the city council. And then, and then hopefully, your life will be better, and we can slow everything down. In the meantime, put up necessary things, right? To either force you, or incentivize you to go slower, or enforce via police. That, that's my solution with road safety.
I, I hate to keep on bringing up HPD and the vacancies, but I have to, because at the end of the day, it is the 400-plus vacancies that it's impeding our ability of HPD to be able to be out on the streets, to enforce our speed limits. I get a daily complaints, especially for those living by H3, quite frankly, and they're going to, they're speeding. And even if HPD, you know, has certain times that they're there, they can't be there 20, 24/7. So I think that, I would say that that's safe to say for all of our residential communities. Speed mitigation measures can only go so far, and everybody knows that. As you know, coming down to Kailua, a young man died, because he was on his bike, and he went over a speed bump, if you're not aware, coming into Kailua. So, so speed mitigation measures are something I get all the time. We actually work in tandem with the State Department of Transportation as well to provide for speed mitigation. I see some former Kalamah residents here in the audience, and I know that Kalamah Street got speed mitigation measures recently. Of course, speed limits is something, you're right, people still speed, but you have to use all of the tools available to yourselves. I had actually asked, I passed the resolution to give us the authority to not do engineering studies for, for all on Oahu, but the state only gave me the authority for around school zones, so I'm gonna take them up on their offer. We're gonna be introducing a measure to reduce the speed limit from 25 to 20, which is what is being recommended by the city's Department of Transportation Services. I believe that if you put 20, they're gonna go 25, right? So I am gonna be proposing that it be 15. I've asked the Kailua Neighborhood Board for their mana'o, and all of you are welcome to express that as well. We hope to introduce the bill in the beginning of August, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna get a lot of support for it. In the bill, I understand that we're gonna be recommending a speed limit within parks, as well, city parks. E-bikes, I've heard a lot of complaint about e-bikes versus bicycles, because a lot of the kids are using that a lot. And so, I got a lot of bicycle advocates concerned about any efforts of regulation. So what I am considering for e-bikes is to simply limit it to the, in the, because they, they speed in the parks, right? And so, to limit it to the speed of the bicycle, which is 10 miles per hour. And then, again, we go back to a matter of enforcement, which is HPD, which is lacking, because we have a vacancy. I, I do have to give kudos to our community policing team, that I would like to see increase their numbers, they've done a good job. We are working in tandem with the Department of Parks and Recreation to provide closure hours to deal with some of the homeless challenges that we are dealing with in the park on a daily basis. So it's not an easy job, but when you only have a few for the whole district that goes all the way to Kohuku, you can see the challenges that we're facing, not just with speeding, but also for dealing with public safety issues in general.
We're gonna end the questions there, so I wanted to thank the candidates for coming. Thank you guys for running for office in the first place, we need people running for office. But yeah, so thank you, Esther, Kelsey, David, for coming. Thank you to the Civil Week team, we got Ashley, Ben, and our manager and editor Patty in the back. Thank you, especially to the audience for caring about your community and coming out today. I know I had a million questions, so thank you for sitting through all of them, and I'm sure you guys have a million more. So we're gonna have the meet and greet session now, and feel free, again, to corner them. And they, they don't have our safety anymore, but yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.